Please stand, those who can, please stand and lead us, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right hand over your heart. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Amy. Would you please do roll call?
Commissioner Valenzuela?
President.
Commissioner Padilla?
Here.
Commissioner Musial?
Here.
Vice Chair Woods?
Here.
Chair Muse?
President.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open public communication. Those wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda, please step forward. You have three minutes to speak. Seeing no interest, I now close public communication. At this time, I'd like to review the consent calendar, or I'm sorry, the first item is to approve the calendar, or minutes from last meeting. Are there any changes from any commissioners, or any additions, corrections? Seeing none, I will accept the motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
Any objections? Seeing none, motion passes. Motion passes five zero. All right, Amy, you're up.
Okay. Oh, there it goes. Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience, this item before you is a request for a parcel map to subdivide one lot into four lots for condominium purposes within the residential garden zone. In general, a condominium is defined as an undivided interest in a portion of real property at the site, such as a driveway, which is commonly used by all parties, and then a separate interest in space, which is generally your dwelling unit. As you can see by the map on the screen, the location of this is just a little bit northeast of the Puente Pacific Avenue intersection. And this is an aerial of the property based on Google Earth that we got off Google Earth. This dwelling unit will be demolished to make way for the proposed development, which is four condominiums, which I'll get to in a second. As proposed and pursuant to Section 152.12 of the city's municipal code, this parcel map has been reviewed and meets, or will meet, the requirements outlined by the responding utility companies, including, and then also including LA County Fire, LA County Sanitation District, and the city's Public Works Department. Those minimum standards include, but are not limited to, having adequate utility systems, water, gas, electric, cable, so on, water distribution, sewer connections, and in addition, the undergrounding of the utilities to the site. The development itself, although not in question tonight, I did want to share with you. It is, the applicant's proposing develop two buildings that would be attached. Each of those units would be two stories, have three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, and an attached two-car garage. There is also common open space and parking on the site, which is in this area. Whoops, right, use that. There you go, right there. And pretty much, that is the extent of this application. So at this time, staff is recommending the Planning Commission open the public hearing, and following the public hearing, adopt Resolution PC 17-07, entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Balden Park Adopting the Findings of Fact, Approving a Tentative Parcel Map Subdividing One Lot Into Four Lots for Condominium Purposes Within the RG Residential Garden Zone pursuant to Table 152.10." And the location is 3726 Puente Avenue. The applicant is TW Team Investments, and the case number is PM 1425. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Chairperson, Muse, members of the commission. Amy, could you explain again that we are not approving the project per se?
No. No, what are your-
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. What we are approving tonight is the tentative map. The tentative map is to take this one lot, which we have right here, and then subdivide it into four condominiums, as you can see, Unit 1, Unit 2, Unit 3, and Unit 4. That is what the commission is considering tonight. I just wanted to provide you as part of the presentation what the proposed project will look like. The proposed project, as I had stated, two-story units, three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, has been through the city's design review process, which it is required to go through, and has been approved and does meet the development standards as required by the code, as well as the applicable design guidelines.
Is it an as-of-right build?
Yes, it is. It is a matter of right.
That means that once you approve, if you approve the condominium, then they just have to go over the counter? So you won't, you won't be seeing the designs and special houses?
No.
If you approve it?
Okay. Any questions by any commissioner to Amy at this point?
Yeah, I have a question. So I'm looking at the map, and everything aligned to Puente Avenue. Is there other two-story, either homes or condos that are aligned on that area too, other than this that would be built up?
There are two-story homes across the street on Chevalier. There's the 7-Eleven. There's a two-story office building right here. There are two or three-story-
On Pacific.
-back here. I want to say there's a single-family residence over here, and I do believe there might be some two-stories over here. Not exactly positive.
Not a whole lot, okay. Now, my other concern too, I did pass by it briefly coming on my way here today, and I don't know, but to me, it looked a little smaller for a four condominium space. That's just my concern.
This project, the land use designation is RG, which is our medium-density residential multifamily zoning district. And pursuant to our code and our general plan, the four units does not exceed what is allowed by the general plan, the municipal code.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question for the, is the developer here?
The applicant is here.
Applicant?
Yeah.
I have a question. Would this in any way be considered low income?
They're going to sell market rate, right, Winnie? Yeah, they're proposing to sell market rate.
So we will have property taxes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other, go ahead?
I do have a concern in regards to this project. Right next door, directly north of this location, is a very similar site, as what's proposed on here. So I did go question neighbors to see houses that their living is in regards to that. And the concern that did come about is the wall that divides Unit 1 and 2, and Unit 3 and 4. The wall is not high enough for their own privacy.
The wall between, right there?
Right there, yes. So I would like to know, how high is that wall? Because I didn't get a chance to see it, but the resident that I spoke to said that was the only thing that they had an issue with.
The maximum height for walls within residential zones is six feet.
Okay.
So, that's as high as they can go.
All right, any other questions?
Okay, so in regards to that wall, can, I put a stipulation in to make sure that that wall is at least five to six feet tall, so that it does give the tenants that privacy that they are asking for?
That is fine.
Okay. That'll be all.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Amy. At this point, I will now open public communication. In regards to this item, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. You have three minutes to speak. Seeing no interest, I'll close public communication. And at this point, I... Are there any other questions that any of the commissioners have in regards to this item to staff? Seeing none, at this point, I am open to a motion.
A motion to move this forward with the implementation of the wall to be six feet tall between Units 1 and 2, and Units 3 and 4.
That will be added as condition number...
In the resolution, it would be condition N as a Nancy.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Do I have any objections? Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Thank you.
And that would be PC 15-07.
That is correct. Next agenda item, please.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience. Abraham Tej is representing planning staff. The request before you is a request for consideration of a tentative parcel map and zone variance to combine three lots into one lot with less than the minimum required lot size, lot width, and lot depth within the FCSV Freeway Commercial Sierra Vista Overlay Zone. The location, 13853, 13987 through 13997 Garvey Avenue, 13904 Corack Street, and 3060 Feather Avenue. The applicant, Mark S. Lamaro, MSL Engineering Incorporated. Case number is PM 1427 and ZV 710. The applicant, MSL Engineering Incorporated, is requesting a zone variance and tentative parcel map to combine three lots to create one lot that does not meet the minimum lot size, width, and depth as required in the Freeway Commercial Sierra Vista Overlay Zone. The lots being combined will create one lot consisting of 36,265 square feet. It will be irregularly shaped, triangular, and physically constrained with street frontages on all sides. This down here would be Garvey Avenue, Corack, Feather. It's completely constrained. The commission shall be aware that the request is only to combine three lots into one and does not include a proposed development or use. Previous uses and structures have been removed, and the lot is currently vacant and unused. Staff has reviewed the applications and has determined that with approval of the zone variance and the, and with the added conditions of approval, the tentative parcel map to combine the three lots into one lot meets the development standards of the zoning code and is in accordance with the goals and policies of the general plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 1509, entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission, the City of Balden Park Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving a Zone Variance and a Tentative Parcel Map to Consolidate Three Lots Into One Lot of Land With Less Than the Minimum Required Lot Size, Lot Width, and Lot Depth Within the FCSV Freeway Commercial Sierra Vista Overlay Zone" according to Table 153.050.030 of the city's municipal code. The location, 13853, 13987 through 13991 Garvey, 13904 Corack, and 3060 Feather. The applicant, Mark S. Lamaro, MSL Engineering Incorporated, case number PM 1427 and ZV 710. Includes staff's presentation.
Thank you. At this point, are there any questions from the commissioners to staff? Seeing none and hearing none at this point. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Woods.
I have a question again to the applicant. What might there be developed on there? Do we have any idea at all? It's just something you're planning, or?
Good evening, I'm Mark Lamaro. I represent the owner that's out of state. I asked them today whether they had any bites of interest of anything, and they said that they're still waiting and that they'll be doing a bill-to-suit. So, they haven't, they don't even have a letter of intent yet, so they're just hopeful that something will surface.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, at this point, I will now open public communication on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. You have two minutes to speak.
Mark Lamaro again for the applicant. I wanted to say that we've read through the conditions of approval and that we have no objection to the conditions. Thanks in part to our work today with Abraham and David to clarify some issues that we had concerns with. And just to make sure that everybody's aware that it's our intent to go ahead and submit for design review once we have a, once we have a project that'll be a bill-to-suit. And so, part of the conditions read that zone variance may need to be extended again after six months. And as of now, I would say for sure it's going to have to be after six months, because that's too soon. Go ahead and get something resolved and approved through the city. So, hopefully, we can just work with an extension rather than having to come back before Planning Commission again.
All right, thank you, sir.
I have a question for staff. What is the minimum-sized lot, and how does this compare?
The minimum lot size required for the FC zone, or Sierra Vista Overlay Zone, is four acres. That would be 174,240 square feet. This lot is 36,265 square feet.
There's not many lots that size around there, that's for sure. Four acres.
This standard was actually put into effect as a result of redevelopment years ago, when the city wanted to see larger-scale freeway-oriented retail development. However, as the commission knows, with the demise of redevelopment, that we really don't have, the city doesn't have very many tools to assist developers in consolidating properties. So, hence, this is where we are today.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I will now see no further interest in public communication. I'll now close public communication. Again, are there any questions or concerns by the commissioners towards staff? And seeing none, at this point, I will accept a motion.
Motion to move.
A second.
Any objections? Seeing none, motion approved by five to zero.
That would be PC 15-09.
That is correct. Amy?
Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience, I would like to introduce Genevieve Shero, who is the project manager for LA Fitness, the entitlements that are coming up next.
Amy, does she work for us, or?
No.
She works for the-
Genevieve works for MIG. We entered into a three-party agreement with MIG and LA Fitness to speedily move this project along, as opposed to just having staff work on it.
So, in other words, she is an independent?
Yes.
She's not working for the developer?
No.
Right. I just wanted the commission to know that, and she's not, she's not the developer, in other words, right?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, Commission, and members of the audience. I'm Genevieve Shero with MIG, as Amy said. Here to talk to you about a number of case numbers. Case number PR 1417, CP 814, parcel map 1426, zone variance 709, administrative adjustment 1501, and sign program 1401. This is for the LA Fitness project. The location is on Garvey Avenue, 13822 through 13916 Garvey Avenue. So you might know this site as the Oval Site, located just north of the freeway, a big vacant lot right now. It has a general plan designation of general commercial. The existing zoning is freeway commercial with the Sierra Vista Overlay, like you heard from the last one. Surrounding properties to the north and west have the same zoning, bounded by the freeway to the south and freeway en rames to the east. Here's a view of the site right now, the vacant lot, looking at it from the intersection of Feather and Garvey. It's about 5.3 acres in size. Site was previously occupied by a mobile home park and some auto-oriented and plumbing and storage uses in the past. There's a number of entitlements associated with this project, unlike the previous ones we talked about tonight. In addition to the parcel map, the actual development plan is also coming forward tonight for your consideration. Because the property is located in the Sierra Vista Overlay, a development plan is required. The proposed development calls for an LA Fitness located on the western portion of the site. This LA Fitness would be 45,000 square feet. The first, the ground floor, two stories, the ground floor would be about 35,000 square feet of space, and then a mezzanine for the other 10,000 square feet of space. The project also would allow for a future development, a second parcel on the eastern side of the parcel, of the site. This would allow for an approximately 9,000-square-foot retail or restaurant space that could be subdivided to be multi-tenants up to four spaces. This, the application for the restaurant retail space is not coming forward tonight, so any future application would have to go through the city's design review process for that building. Tonight, we're just talking about the division of the lot and the LA Fitness building proper, and the comprehensive development plan that is associated with the parking, the signage, the lighting, the landscaping that would happen across the entire property. So the application would require a conditional use permit to operate in the freeway commercial zone. The LA Fitness as a health club is a conditionally permitted use. The building, here's the ground floor, floor plan would include the cardio equipment, a pool, free weights, on 35,000 square feet of space. Then the mezzanine area would have a basketball court, racquetball courts, and cardio equipment. Oh, I misspoke, the cardio's on the top floor. Architecturally, the building would have a contemporary design, the colors of browns and grays, browns and beiges to be consistent with the city's colors ordinance. Here's a rendering, looking at it from the Garvey Avenue intersection, kind of around the curve. Project would include the installation of landscaping. This would include a small outdoor amenity space over on this side. This would include some benches and a path, a meandering path as well. Bike racks would also be installed on the opposite side of the building. So for the tentative parcel map, I wanted to go into a little more detail on this. There are a few things that are going to, that are proposed. The street would be somewhat reconfigured over on this portion. There's right now a pork chop island that divides the street, so you have kind of a right-turn pocket with a pork chop island. That would be removed at the request of the city to kind of reconfigure this, make it more pedestrian-friendly. And the applicant has agreed to make that improvement, so that would be a traditional right-turn angle there. And a somewhat of a reconfiguration of that parcel, included to occupy some of that former street space. The site access would allow for access from Garvey in two locations, here and here. So the parcel map would involve a zone variance. The project conforms with nearly all development standards, but the zone variance, again, here is for a variance against the lot width and lot size. Again, the size requirement being four acres, and the lot width requirement being 300 feet. So the one parcel on the west, which would house the LA Fitness, conforms to those requirements, while the one on the east does not. It has, it is about 1.27 acres, and the lot width is just under 300. The applicant complies, or will comply, with all requirements of LA County Fire, LA Sanitation Districts, and the Public Works Department requirements for utilities and access. The other modification to development standards would be a proposed administrative adjustment for the parking stall width of a number of the stalls. Some of the stalls would conform to the standard 10 by 20 that the city's code requires, and some would be 9 by 20, and some would be 9 by 18. These would be able to conform to the administrative adjustment process, being a deviation of less than 10%. And it's probably good to note that those standard sizes are standard throughout the industry and not considered compact sizes. The project would also include installation of electric vehicle charging stations and areas marked for clean air vehicles. The project, because it's located in the Sierra Vista Overlay Zone, also includes a sign program. The project would involve a freeway pole sign, which conforms to the requirements of the development code. It would also have graphic panels, 13 graphic panels. As you can see on the bottom picture, there's three of those graphic panels. They would depict healthy activities, exercise, kinds of things. There'd be two monument signs. These would have spaces for the future tenant signs, for that future retail restaurant pad. As part of this process, an initial study was completed, and a mitigated negative declaration was completed. The effects were found to be less than significant with some mitigation incorporated. The mitigation was associated with two parts. For construction, there's mitigation for air quality during construction, to make sure that low VOCs and things like that are used. There's noise considerations during construction, and to make sure if any resources are uncovered during grading, the appropriate protocols are enacted. And then with regard to project operation, there was mitigation regarding traffic signal timing on two different intersections. So the timing, there's no physical improvements that are required, but the timing of certain signals would be modified in order to mitigate any impacts of the proposed project. During the 20-day public review period, one comment letter was received from LA County Sanitation, stating general information about the capacity of sewer, saying that there was adequate capacity for the project. So, staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution PC 1508, entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Balden Park to: 1. Approve and Adopt the Mitigated Negative Declaration of Environmental Impact; 2. Approve a Development Plan Allowing the Construction of a 45,000-square-foot, two-story LA Fitness Health Club, and the Future Development of a Single-Story Multi-Tenant 9,000-square-foot Retail Restaurant Building pursuant to Section 153.090.020 of the municipal code; 3. Adopt the Findings of Fact and the Conditional Use Permit to Allow a Health Club Use Within the Freeway Commercial Sierra Vista Overlay Zone; 4. Adopt the Findings of Fact and Approve Zone Variance Modifying the Freeway Commercial Development Standards to Reduce the Minimum Lot Size and Lot Width for Parcel 2; 5. Adopt the Findings of Fact and Approve- 5. Adopt the findings of fact and approve tentative parcel map to re-subdivide four legal lots into two new and reconfigured parcels; 6. Adopt the findings of fact and approve the administrative adjustment, modifying the parking development standards to allow a 10% reduction in the minimum required onsite parking stall dimensions; and 7. Adopt the findings of fact and approve a comprehensive sign program for the LA Fitness Health Club and for the future development on parcel 2 pursuant to Section 153.170.107 of the Municipal Code. The location is at 13822 to 13916 Garvey Avenue. The applicant is RM Callahan Consultants LLC. Case numbers again are PR 1417, CP 814, ZV 709, PM 1426, AA 1501, and SP 1401. Thank you. That concludes my staff's presentation. The applicant is here tonight if you have any questions of staff or of the applicant.
Thank you very much. You can take a breath now. Okay, at this point, do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I got a question. Is there, looking at that little dome on top, is that a solar panel? Or how, or do we have solar panels?
Let's see, let's go backwards. Are you looking at the kind of rotunda here?
Yes.
That is not, to my best knowledge, no. It's an architectural feature to kind of accent the entranceway.
My next question, is that going to be fit with solar panels, or?
It is not anticipated to be, have solar panels on it.
One question that I have. Has there been any surveys in regards to the amount of traffic that will be increased with the new location of a gym? Since Garvey and the entrance to the freeway is a four-way stop sign, are there considerations for putting a stoplight at that location to help mitigate the traffic that probably will be there?
At the freeway entrance on ramp on the east side of the site?
Right.
So there was a traffic study done, to answer your first question. Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan did the traffic study, and they are here tonight if you'd like to ask specific questions on the traffic study. Do you want to, do you want to answer that, Claire?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Claire Look Yeager. I'm a principal with the firm of LLG Engineers. Our firm coordinated very extensively with the City Public Works Department, and we prepared a formal traffic impact analysis. Just very quickly, we analyzed a total of nine off-site intersections. Only one was unsignaled, and that's the location you're referencing. The remaining eight locations were signalized. We reviewed existing conditions. We looked at future conditions with the proposed project. And we also included regional growth in the traffic analysis at project opening. When we reviewed the project traffic volumes, we did prepare a trip generation forecast, not only for the health club component, fully occupied at 45,000 square feet, but also a combination of retail and restaurant. It's a little bit over 200 net new PM peak hour of vehicle trips to and from the site. As you know, the city has very specific significance thresholds at a point that we have to, as traffic engineers, identify a significant traffic impact. When the location is unsignaled, the overall level of service, which is like a grade in school, it describes the operations. It varies from Level of Service A, which is very good, no delay, no congestion. And then it varies to Level of Service B, C, D, E, and F. And of course, F is a very heavily congested condition. At this particular freeway ramp, we did not exceed the city's significance thresholds. And that again is based on a very finite number in terms of increased delay to motorists. So there will be an increase in vehicle trips. It didn't exceed the city's adopted significance thresholds to a point that we would have to identify mitigation or improvements to improve operations.
Okay, thank you. But as you indicated, your survey anticipated the maximum number of vehicles in this area. And right now, you, your survey did not exceed the city's requirements. At any point, would you, at some point, modify that to where it might have to be changed? Or would that be something that you'd have to come back and review?
Yeah, at any point in time, the City Public Works Department could review a potential signal installation, but they'll look at our current operations and projections. But there are very defined traffic signal warrants that we, as traffic engineers, employ in considering when you install a signal. Part of it is volume-related. It could also be pedestrian crossings. It could be a safety issue if there's so many accidents of a particular type over a certain length of time. So at any point in time, the city can continue to review that location. And again, any traffic analysis is really a snapshot in time. We've, we've looked at the existing conditions. We've looked at the future operations with this project at full occupancy at the time, but that doesn't stop the city from continuing to monitor the location in the future as volumes increase, which they will likely over time.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions by the commissioners?
What, you said that grades from A to F. What grade did you give that intersection?
Our senior planner, our project manager Alfred, we're going to look that up so we don't misquote. It's operating at Level of Service C, which is a mid-range in both the weekday AM commute peak hour and the weekday PM commute peak hour. So it's, it's what we consider, when we see C, that's a very good operation for urban areas such as, such as this.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, at this point, I will now open public communication. Anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item, please step forward, please state your name. And you have approximately three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alejandra Nocega, and I'm the property owner of 3069 Feather Avenue, which is directly affected by not only this, but the parcel map prior to this. I was going to ask about the traffic study. I don't agree with the C. I currently live there. It takes me 10 to 15 minutes to exit Feather Avenue to get onto Francisco or even Garvey to get to the freeway entrance. Currently, it is just awful. The traffic from, I know it's Caltrans with the traffic signal, but I think the city really needs to speak to them regarding that, and especially now with this gym coming in. I'm not against the gym. I'm, I'm happy that it's going in. I'd rather see a gym than an empty lot. But then taking into consideration that you will probably have restaurants there or retail spaces. Like I said, right now, currently, the situation is not very good for the residents that are currently there. I know eventually the city will probably entice somebody to buy us out so it can go into commercial, which is fine. But until then, I think you really need to consider the people that live there and how this is going to affect us currently. We also, I don't know if in the traffic study, it was considered all the traffic we get from the school, which is, I believe, Foster Elementary. The exit, the rear ench, exit or entry right there, there's constant cars coming in, dropping off children. The school bus drops them off at 3:00 PM as well from some other location. So I mean, I don't know if all that was taken into consideration, but it really should. And like I said, I, I'm all for it. I just think you, the traffic situation will get worse. So I think that traffic, the signal light should probably start being considered now, not later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name is Mike Callahan. I represent Fitness International, the owner of the property. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank city staff. We closed escrow December 26, 2013 on the property, and it's been quite a journey getting to this point. And I'd like to thank them for their, their expertise and support. It's been, it's been great. Maybe one point to address the, the lady who preceded me just now. Our traffic study did include the inclusion of a 9,000, 9,000 square feet of restaurant, two different types of restaurants. So whatever trips are calculated from that have been included in the study. That's part of your staff report. I want to let you know that all the design professionals who represent us are here tonight in each of the practices that you see represented in these exhibits. Architecture, landscape architecture, traffic engineering, civil engineering, and our sign company, ADS. So we are, we are willing to embrace and agree with all the conditions that are suggested and proposed by staff. And so with that, I, I would like to invite you to ask questions, if you would. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much. And my initial, I have several questions, but the initial design in regards to the landscaping, of course, with the drought situation, are there other alternative designs that would accommodate the lack of water usage?
Well, the design is consistent with the city's ordinances for plant selection, for drought tolerance, and the like. Specifically, each of the tree species and other plant material are categorized as, as low water use, moderate, and so on. So, John, perhaps you could step up and answer more comprehensively? Chairman Muse's question.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. The landscaping we have here is, again, it's a combination of low water use and moderate water use plant material. And the key thing I'd like to say is that what really is a water consumption plant material is turf, and we have no turf. And the key, the other key feature here with regard to landscaping is the irrigation system. And the irrigation system that's proposed here is all drip, all underground. There's no wasteful spray heads. There's no water runoff on the sidewalk going down the gutter. And so it's a very pinpoint controlled irrigation system. So we're not going to have any wasteful use of water. And again, it's all weather-based controller system. So again, if, you know, if there's a lot of moisture in the air and it's damp and all that, you know, it, it, the controls, the irrigation controller system will, will adjust the scheduling on the, on the clock. So every precaution is taken to, to provide a very efficient system. And the plant material, again, is, is low and moderate use, and so fits within the, the city's guidelines, so. Any other questions regarding that?
No, I'm, I'm done with the landscaping. Any other questions from any commissioner?
I got a question, yeah. That 10% reduction in the parking stalls, will that include the proposed restaurants or retail stores?
Mike, you want to?
I'll pull that one up, actually. And you have this in your packet as well. The, the different colors show the different sized stalls. So the parking, parking is shared across the property, but it is parked adequately for the 9,000-square-foot restaurant retail space on their side of the property. And then the, the spaces, the 300 for the LA Fitness on this side of the property. So the green and the, the green are the full-size spaces. The orange are the 9 by...18, thank you. And then the, the, the smallest sizes are the, the yellow size here. So you can see that they're spread across the, the property.
I got another question. Was there any consideration into maybe going to story of the parking? That we could have plenty of parking?
We didn't consider that since the site is adequately parked, the surface parking. One of our overarching objectives here for the project was that each of the uses be provided with the required number of parking stalls on each separate parcel. So there's 300 spaces for the health club on parcel 1, 90 spaces for the 9,000-square-foot, if it's restaurant, which is more, there's more parking required for a restaurant, 10 spaces per thousand square feet. So we didn't see the need to have any kind of a parking structure, per se.
Well, my concern is when you have a restaurant and you have that many people, you're going to require, you'll require handicap parking, plenty of them. And the restaurant will require a lot of handicap parking too. This will minimize parking even a lot more.
Yes, we've provided the required number of accessible stalls for both the restaurant and the health club.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question in regarding to lighting. How well will it be lit around that area? Because in the evening, it can get pretty dark in that area.
We've got a photometric plan which shows the lighting spread, which, well, it's really difficult to see. It's in your package, but we feel that the lighting is adequate. Sometimes trees compete with, with light fixtures. But LA Fitness as a use, as a company, we're always very concerned about our, the safety of our members and their comfort level there. So we feel there's plenty of light. We also will be placing security cameras throughout the parking lot in consultation with your police chief, who we've met with in the past regarding that.
Okay, yeah, that's my concern because I don't want anything to be happening there while people are in the gym. Because I used to go to a previous gym in Wasco Vina, and my car got broken into, and they ransacked it. So, and it was, because it was pretty dark in that area, so. It's my concern. I don't want that to happen to people around here in Balden Park.
Yes, and we do provide small wallet lockers throughout the workout areas in the gym so that people don't, you know, they are less tempted to leave their personal belongings in their vehicles.
Oh, I haven't left anything, but, you know, people just take to ransack cars, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, at this point, I will now close public communication. And again, are there any questions by the commissioners towards staff and/or the, the owners of the property?
Yeah, I have a, just a comment. I think Balden Park should open their arms to a prestigious company like LA Fitness and welcome them to our city because we can sure use you and hopefully we'll treat you right. right. Thank you. I got a comment too. After I received the plans, architects, I was astonished. Great, great, I mean, everything is explained. I really liked your plans, whoever worked on them, all of you worked on them. They're great plans. I've seen plans for condos and for homes and stuff like that where I worked at, but nothing like this. This is great, believe me. Everything's down to detail, to the point of A, B, C, D. I like that. Thank you very much. And I, I do welcome you too. Thank you.
Any others?
I have one concern in regards to previous persons that did speak in regards to traffic. It's only a two-way street. Is there any way possible to make that middle lane where people are actually able to make a left turn? I don't know what those...
That would actually be after a study was done by the Public Works Department. Traffic studies in engineering are very, very precise and have to meet certain criteria based in the city's code. For example, you just can't go put a stop sign willy-nilly. There has to be a specific reason and meet certain criteria for it. So that would be something that the Public Works Department, you know, could look at and would have to look at, you know, in the future.
Okay. Would it be too late to implement an entranceway on Francis Kito Avenue, right after the bridge?
We actually talked about that, and it doesn't meet the public work standards.
So right now, the only two entrances are going to be on Garvey.
That is correct.
Any other concerns? All right. See no other concerns at this point. I will accept a motion.
Motion, remove this.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do I have any objections? Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. And that's for all of the...
Right, all of the seven entitlements, PC 15-08.
Yes. And again, I want to piggyback on Mr. Woods's comment, welcome to Balden Park. And it is my hope that your presence will also be bringing in some quality restaurants to fill that location on your property. So again, welcome and thank you very much for coming to Balden Park. All right. Amy?
Chair and Commissioners, I've included under Reports of Officers, the Planning Division's monthly reports for February, March, and April. So if you had any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain those at this time. We're busy.
No, we're good. Any questions? No? All right. Go ahead.
Moving on to commission and staff communications, the first item that I have is a verbal update on the Vineland Residential Care Facility. We are still, obviously, as I've mentioned before, this item is in litigation and we are going back and forth, the parties are going back and forth at this time. So that is the most update, the most recent update I have now. As I've stated before, this item, I want to keep on the agenda just to, you know, give you updates, you know, as we have planning commission meetings, so.
Thank you.
Number seven, a verbal update on the proposed Irwindale Materials Recovery Facility and Transfer Station. I have no update on that. There is no movement that I'm aware of by the City of Irwindale on that item, so we're just still kind of waiting, see if anything happens. Number eight, verbal update on the proposed resumption of mining and subsequent reclamation of the Olive Pit. This is still in litigation. The city has sued the City of Irwindale for the lack of adequacy of the draft environmental impact report, and that is still going back and forth at this time. So I have no update there either. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any update on the construction of the units that are going to be over here next to?
The Rome Project?
Right.
On the other side of City Hall?
Right.
They're moving along. They're moving along. They appear to be on schedule. We meet every other week? Yeah. They'll actually be, the staff and the developer and the contractor and everybody will be meeting tomorrow, but the last meeting we had, everything is moving along at the rate it's supposed to be, so.
And the updated information on the construction for the Balden Park Merced location?
Mega Five. Mega Five. I don't have anything yet at this time. They have not submitted for plan check. I can say that I've had some inquiries by different housing developers that are looking to purchase the project and construct it, but at this time, nothing has been submitted to the Building Division for plan check.
All right. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none at this point, I will accept a motion for adjournment. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have any objections? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned.